We'd like to welcome our guests to the Watchtower Prairie School Board meeting. Come any time that your schedule will allow. Ms. Mickles, call the board, please.
Here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Manley?
Here.
That's standing, please. For the pledge of allegiance to be done by a board member of the board.
Salute pledge. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I repeat, should be done by a board member, Greg Manley.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, just how loving and awesome and merciful God you are, Heavenly Father. We glorify and praise you. Most of all, we thank you for the blessings you give us each and every day, Heavenly Father. We thank you for the opportunity that you've given us, each one of us, to serve on this school board. And we ask for your guidance and direction as we look at the business items on the agenda today and make decisions that's in the interest of our children and our Watchtower Parish, Heavenly Father. We just give you the prayer and glory for that opportunity to serve our citizens and our students, Heavenly Father. And just thank you for preaching to these board members and continue to guide and direct us in the direction you want us to go. All we pray in Jesus' precious holy name. Amen.
Amen. Moving down to the minutes, we need to get approval of the minutes, June the eighth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Seven.
No motion, got a second. All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Suppose no? Motion carries. Moving now to approved agenda, we need to add items two and three and in the business part and down to mission. The commission to bid is item number two. So I need to amend the agenda to add them three items.
I'm making a motion to amend the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor of yes?
Yes.
Suppose no? Motion carries. Need a motion and second to approve the full agenda.
May we, may we approve the full agenda?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor of yes?
Yes.
Suppose no? Motion carries. Moving right down to personnel report, Dr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We have several announcements for new positions that I would like to make this afternoon. First of all, our principal at Woodlong Junior High School, Ms. Pam Jones. Pam, if you'd like to say. We also will have an acting principal at Riverbend Elementary. So I stole him from Shady Grove for a half a year and we're gonna put him at Riverbend, and that is Mr. Darnell Whittington. We also have an assistant principal at Woodlong Junior High, Mr. Michael Armon. Riverbend Interim Elementary Assistant, also in an interim, is Ms. Velika Gray. Since Mr. Whittington is coming from Shady Grove as the assistant principal, we had to name an interim at Shady Grove Elementary, and that is Ms. Mindy Adams. Mindy is actually giving swimming lessons right now. She does swimming during the summer, and so she was not able. She and I met at seven forty-five this morning, and she is excited to assume those duties as interim assistant principal at Shady Grove. Also, we have Woodlong Junior High Curriculum Coordinator, Ms. Chammy Thornton. And Linwell Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, Ms. Irene Tavett. And I am really happy to announce and to say, and I think that Mr. Geis is even more happy than I am, that I have no permission to open anything for this meeting. So we are good to go from here. Congratulations to all of you that will be serving in leadership roles for the district.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Coker. Moving right down to business, item number one. To consider and take action with respect to adopting an ordinance providing for the continued levy within school sales tax, District Number One of the Parish of Watchtower, Louisiana, effective January the first, twenty twenty-three. One of a one percent, half of one percent sales and use tax, such tax having been authorized at a special election held in the district on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Grant Sluter and Ms. Naomi Thompson.
Grant Sluter with Old Yudell Bond Council. This is a housekeeping item. The half-cent sales tax was renewed by the voters. It is necessary to adopt an ordinance formally levying that tax effective for the additional term after its scheduled expiration.
Graham, would you like a roll call?
You'll roll call vote? We have a roll call vote?
Let's get a motion.
Get a motion, motion and a second for a roll call vote?
I saw a move, we approved the resolution as presented by Grant.
Second.
Got a motion and a second and a roll call vote, Ms. Mickles?
Mr. Como?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Luther. Moving down to item number two. Announce that Parish School Board of the Parish of Watchtower, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the East Watchtower Parish School District of the Parish of Watchtower, State of Louisiana, to authorize the assurance of general obligation bonds at its meeting on Tuesday, August the tenth, and at twelve P.M. at the Parish School Board Office, sixteen hundred North Seventh Street. Meeting on Tuesday, August the tenth, at the Watchtower Parish School Board Street, West Monroe, Louisiana, Mr. Grant Sluter.
As you're aware from prior elections, in order to preserve your option to consider an election call for the November thirteenth election, it is necessary that, in order to preserve your option to consider that election call, you first make an announcement at one of your scheduled meetings. In order to, that announcement would indicate that you propose to meet at your August tenth meeting, and it states the time and the location, and to consider calling, adopting a resolution calling an election in the East District for general obligation bonds. And that will need, the formal announcement would need to be read into the official minutes of this meeting.
Okay.
And Mr. Manley, would you like to read those for us, please?
Yes, I'd be glad to read the announcement of the public meeting that Grant just alluded to. Notice is hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Tuesday, August the tenth, two thousand twenty-one, at twelve P.M. at its regular meeting place, the Parish School Board Office, sixteen hundred North Seventh Street, West Monroe, Louisiana. The Parish School Board of the Parish of Watchtower, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in the East Watchtower Parish School District of the Parish of Watchtower, State of Louisiana, to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds therein.
You need a motion? No motion, just roll call?
Just a roll call.
No.
Need a roll call vote?
Do we need a roll call vote?
It actually does not require a vote. It's simply reading the notice into the minutes, which you have done. The remaining requirements are, it will be published one time in the official journal, and the legislative delegation will be notified. And again, this simply preserves your legal option to consider that resolution at your August tenth board meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Grant. All right. Moving down to item number three. Request to speak to the board regarding employee staffing questions, is that a mandatory?
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you today. My name is Amanda Terry. I've been privileged, I've had the privilege of being the band director at Good Hope since the school opened nineteen years ago, where I've always had an assistant band director. For the past six years, the assistant has been Robin West, a wonderful teacher who's here with me today. Due to budget restraints, a band position at Good Hope Middle School is being eliminated. So this fall, I'm scheduled to be the band director at Westridge. You all probably know that music is fun and something that most people enjoy. For many of you and for myself, the first thing you do when you get in the car is turn on the music. Are you aware of the scholarship opportunities? Most colleges offer many more music scholarships than they do academic scholarships because they want a big, huge marching band and a big choir. A music scholarship paid my way through college. Mr. Freeman, band director at West Monroe, organized a signing event for his senior band students recently. All of the seniors in the West Monroe Band Program were offered music scholarships. Many books have been written describing in great detail how playing an instrument, specifically reading music, has helped students academically. An English teacher at Good Hope came to me once and had spent hours analyzing her students' test scores. She said she noticed improvement more in her band students than in her other students and wondered if it had anything to do with being in the band. Yes, it does. If you've ever been to a Northwestern game, you may have noticed that their band is huge. Why is that? Years ago, the college realized that their band members were reaching the point of graduation at a faster rate than any other organization in the school. And so they started pumping more money into band scholarships at Northwestern. That's why you see that enormous band whenever you see it. Longevity. Not only does studying music make life more fun, provide scholarships and help you academically, but it's a hobby that lasts a lifetime. How often do you see a seventy-year-old football player or an eighty-year-old cheerleader? But if you go to hear the Twin City Community Band, you're gonna see people of all ages. When I was at First Baptist Dallas, there was a woman who played in our orchestra who was ninety years old, playing the trumpet. It's one of those things that can go with you the rest of your life. Staffing concerns. I love to watch a good football game, we all do. Robbie Freeman, I think, is West Monroe High School's biggest football fan. And he's here with us today too, band director at West Monroe. But think how much that Rebel Band is adding to that football experience at West Monroe. It's such an exciting organization to listen to. But when you look at the band, you see approximately one director per one hundred students. When you look at the football team, it's closer to maybe one per four, one per five. I have a picture I'm gonna share with you when I get finished of, that I took at Good Hope, at a football game one night, I was in the band, I was in the stands with the band, and I snapped a shot of our football team. And there are ten coaches in matching uniforms with that team. We had more kids in the stands that night than they had on the field, and there were two of us. I am not saying that in any way to knock a coach. I am friends with the coaches at Good Hope, and I don't wanna hurt them in any way or anywhere. I am simply saying they have done a better job, I think, than we as band directors have done in convincing the rest of the world that we need more than one person. They've got people helping them with the different positions that are being taught. But we are the same way. We have all these different instruments going on with anywhere from fifty to a hundred and, two hundred kids, in the case in West Monroe. We have all these students, and they're all playing different instruments. They're all playing them at different levels and playing different parts. And we need more than one person in order to accomplish that. Another concern I have is liability issues. When you only have one director, you are setting yourself up for major problems. There is no way I can watch every child all the time. Even walking my students out to the football field at the beginning of the game, I'm either at the front of that line or at the back. And that means if there's only one director, there's nobody at the other end. And that can be disastrous. What if someone gets hurt? What if someone gets sick? What if a fight breaks out? What if two kids start kissing or something? I mean, this is high school, teenagers, you know, middle school and high school kids. Problems arise, and I have known band directors who have lost their jobs over those kind of things. And my question to you is, would you as a school board be able to support me? If I were being sued because something bad happened to a child and I was their teacher, they were with me, but I didn't see it? Because there were one of me and a hundred of them at the same time. So there are concerns there. It is not unusual anymore to have multiple band directors in a school. I have taught in four different school districts over the thirty-four years that I've been teaching, and in all four of those school districts, there were more than one band director in the schools, including this one. I have always had my assistant at Good Hope, as I said before. Louisiana, however, is lagging behind on this. There are some districts that are using more than one per school, but most, most of the schools in Louisiana are not. They're still using one, which is a little bit scary, and it's, and it's hard. As far as how we use two directors at Good Hope, that is a very detailed explanation that I don't have time for, but I think it's important that you get some of those ideas, and that's gonna be part of the little handout I'm gonna give you in a few minutes that you can just take with you and glance over and see how we use two directors. We are not a director and a spare. You will never walk in my band room and see one of us teaching while the other one is playing solitaire on the computer. That has never happened, and it will not ever happen. We are both team teaching in our classes. We use two rooms, two directors, to split those kids into smaller groups and accomplish what we need to do every day. Another concern is band director burnout. Band directors are worn out across the country, and especially in Louisiana. So many band directors leave the profession early. I think I'm at fifty-seven, I think I'm the oldest band director in the parish now. I don't think there's anyone that's stuck it out any longer than I have. But there's a reason why they leave. They're, they're stressed out, they can't accomplish what they want to do, they can't get home in time to see their family at night. I was told that we could never have two band directors per school here because we can't get people to apply for that lot. Well, folks, there's a reason for that. They are applying for jobs when they're, when it's a situation where they can handle it and be successful. When the position for Robin West opened up at Good Hope, there were seven that we interviewed for that. And we ended up with a great teacher there. So I, I think in positions where a band director feels like they can be successful, there would be more people applying. I taught in Waxahachie, Texas for a while, and it was an interesting situation. I was brought over there as part of a team of new band directors. The band program was in critical shape. It was very small, very weak. And they, the school board and the superintendent specifically, had decided they wanted to build a band program in Waxahachie. And it was so exciting to see that happen. It didn't happen instantly, it happened over a period of years. But Waxahachie High School's band, if you take a minute and Google them, they are one of Texas's finest now. They are, they are very large and very strong. And it was fun to watch that happen out of the determination of the leaders in that city. I know that Watchtower Parish wants great music. West Monroe High School's band and choir has been, I think, the pride and glory musically of Watchtower Parish for a while, but keep in mind, that is your school where you have consistently kept two band directors for a long time, two or three, in some cases, for a long time, and two choir directors as well. And as a result, they are very, very successful. The truth is, most of the other band programs in the area are struggling. My hope is to see restoration and growth in all the band programs in Watchtower Parish. For the students, they need that. For scholarships, for test scores, for the culture of the community, for the love and enjoyment of music, one of God's greatest gifts. And we start improving these bands by increasing staffing. We have to work toward at least two directors at each high school and each middle school. And we need to increase the budget, but that's, I talked for a minute today. That budget hadn't been raised in a while, but we won't get into that today. I know that Mr. Geis would love to see this sort of excitement in the band programs in the parish. He has had a student in the band at Watchtower, and Dr. Coker loves music too. We just talked the other day about musical program that we both loved in Branson. By the way, that was the best thing I've ever seen.
Was good, wasn't it?
It was fabulous. But Mr. Geis and Dr. Coker cannot do this alone. The kind of improvement and excitement that I'm talking about would take the support of the whole parish, the schools, and even you, the school board. Now, I know you don't generally deal with staffing issues. Dr. Coker explained that to me before today. But he was kind enough to let me come and pour my heart out to you anyway. Thank you for doing that. If you can possibly come up with any way to help Mr. Geis save the band program at Good Hope, I would greatly appreciate it, and he probably would too. I would not want his job this year with all the cuts he has had to make. Thank you for listening to my vision for the vans in this parish and what they can become with added staffing in the years to come. And thank you for this opportunity to speak to your staff. And I do have a little handout I wanna hand out to you. Can I just explain again how we use two directors in a school successfully? And the picture I was telling you about with the football team is hidden there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Moving down to item number four, consideration approval of policies, Ms. Jennifer Newton.
Good afternoon, board. You will look in your policy folder, you will see one policy that is up for your approval today.
We have a motion and a second to approve this policy.
So moved.
Second, second. All in favor of yes?
Yes.
I have a question.
A little discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, discussion. Ms. Newton, how do you do? Question. As I reviewed the elementary, middle school policy and the high school policy, there's a slight difference of variation in the two policies. Why is that?
Dr. Coker, do you wanna answer that?
Well, we have, we actually have people that served on that committee here that Mr. Merritt and Mr. Aswell and Ms. Nicole Zordon, I think, were you on this? We'll let y'all, y'all were in charge of that, so Mickey, you and Warner can answer questions on that.
We actually had meetings with principals concerning the cell phone policy that was brought to their attention, basically because of the change of times and venues. And as we were sitting there discussing the policy and how to organize and do them, it became quite obviously that there's a difference in approach with elementary students compared to the middle school and the high school students. So the elementary principals broke off into a session with Mr. Aswell, and they developed this policy as a group. And the middle school principals, the high school principals developed their policy, as you see it there. And so due to the leadership of the elementary people, this was a program that they approved and felt comfortable with.
It just seems to me that the elementary school policy is a little more stringent than the high school policy, that the elementary school kids.
These were basically sent down to fourth hall and presented to them, and then as well has been presented before our legal counsel.
I think these recommendations came from our principals within the district as they did their different breakout sessions. Mr. Aswell, you sat in the elementary one. And when we first passed this out, there was some ambiguity in the, the policy in itself. It gave too much flexibility within the schools. It said, may do up to a certain number of days. And as we went through and we vetted this through our attorneys, our attorneys were quick to say, you don't need ambiguity in a policy. You need to have the same thing happening at Roser Elementary that would be happening at Linwell, that would be happening at Riverbend, that would be happening at Claiborne. And so that's why it may appear or come across as we put a little bit more structure into that so that the same thing is happening throughout the district. And we were looking for consistency.
I remember that, I remember that, that was mentioned. And when you speak of ambiguity, when I, I look at the elementary school, it looks as if the penalty for elementary school kids is a little more stricter than that of the high school kids. I'm just.
Mr. Aswell or Nicole, did you sit in on some of these meetings with that? Do y'all wanna address that? Yeah. Please.
The elementary, when we discussed it with the principals, the elementary was determined that you don't have nearly as many problems with elementary as you do with middle and high school. And so if you stop it at the very beginning, and this was from the principals, it wasn't from the committee, if you stop it from the beginning with them, then you're not gonna have, have to, you know, go any further with it. So that was the reason behind it. And they're the ones who decided the stricter one. The high school actually was a little bit stronger, and then we put the two together, the middle and the high. We felt like of the schools that were in there, there were several that had, in their policy, we used to do this, if you take the phone up, it stayed to be fifteen days.
Right.
Well, nowadays, kids, parents depend upon that phone for these children. You know, and I would hate to be a principal of a school and take a phone from an elementary kid and he go home and not be a parent there. And that parent been trying to call. So that was, we had, we took into account those, those things that might hurt or benefit those, those children. Hope that's fine.
So I guess, so with the high school kids, they could possibly lose their phone for five days. But with the elementary school kids, they could possibly lose theirs for up to ten days.
Nothing, Jeff.
That's on the fifth, that's on the fifth offense?
When it came to our office, it had a range, a sliding scale, like three to ten days, or five to ten days on the elementary. And we said that, you know, you don't need to give the principal that much discretion because what's done at this school may be something totally different at the other. The other thing we have done that's not reflected in the policies, we prepared a form for the parent to sign. Because I too shared with your, you the concern that maybe the parents not know what's going on. But when the parents come to pick up the phone, they're gonna have to sign that they've been advised in writing what the policy is and what the implications are if it happens again, even at the elementary level. That way, the parent can stress to the child, look, do not have this phone out. And so we tried to reach a happy medium here. The one thing I commend you on here is that this policy is, is not talking about charging anymore. And, and so I think that is important. So is this policy perfect? No. I've not seen a perfect cell phone policy. Cell phones are a plague when it comes to instruction. And unfortunately, sometimes we're finding our instructors, our teachers use them too often. We won't go there. But, but Mr. McCoy, I, I share your observations.
Yeah.
This, I think, is, is a collaborative effort of your people and that are on the frontline trenches. This is what they want, and we've kinda tinkered with it to, to get it as best we can.
Could I add one thing, Ms. McCoy?
Yes, sir.
That the principals all made agreement to, or conversation to, they have not had children that even had a fifth offense, nor had the high school had anyone that had had a fourth offense. They got there there. But no one's ever reached that.
They just didn't tell you about it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I think the thing that, the whole board would be pleased with is that it's gonna be the same at every school. You're not going to hear Johnny over, this school was treated one way and at a different school another way. It should be the same across the board.
Right. And part of, part of what we're planning on doing near the very beginning of school is making sure that our principals, assistant principals, those that deal with issues, especially with phones, are all inserviced and trained on the same, this policy, so that everyone is doing the same thing. And I'll tell you, in my six years as superintendent, I don't know that I've gotten a call from a parent on an elementary phone. I have gotten several from middle and high school on, on the, the issues. And my big thing on this was consistency. I need the same thing happening across the board. And when you have a school as large as West Monroe High School, and you have one assistant principal doing one thing and one doing another, not that they do that, not that that's happened, that creates problems.
Well, I, I know, also, I know Ms. Ms. May and Mr. Como, that, that they would know one on the high school, they were on the high school. But I worked at the high school, and it seems like we had a greater problem in the high school than we did with the elementary school. Those are the ones that would try you the most. But.
Yeah.
But thank you.
You and, any discussion from the audience? I'm sorry, I missed y'all. Any discussion from the audience on the cell phone policy? Any more discussion from the board?
Could this be posted on social media where parents at each school? We can put it on our, yeah, we can put it on our Facebook page, but it's gonna be in every handbook that, that's gonna be out there.
Yeah, I think consistency and communication are the two big words on this whole policy.
Agreed.
I know you've already talked about consistency, but I think all the parents need to be communicated upfront what the guidelines are so there's no surprises.
Right.
Once a rule is broken. So I, I guess the principals will handle that at each school.
They will. And because laws have changed and they're continually evolving on handbooks, our handbooks will be online for every school. There will be signature pages that parents will have to sign, students will have to sign. And I have highly encouraged, from elementary through middle through high school, And I have highly encouraged from elementary through middle through high school that they select a teacher. It can be a reading teacher, it can be a social studies teacher, but to actually teach the handbook. And 17 years I was principal, the very first test that was ever given in my school was on the handbook by, so one teacher's teaching the entire thing. So we know our students are getting educated on what's in that handbook and how it's being used and how it will be used throughout the course of the year. And so that is, that's something I've encouraged our principals to, to consider.
I, I, I like that idea. And I would suggest also if there are new policies in the handbook from year to year, that there may be an asterisk somewhere up front indicating, see new policies on this particular page. Especially with the cell phone, I believe next year you'll be looking at it again on the high school level. We'll see.
I have one more question on the in-school suspension. Do all schools have in-school suspension programs?
To my knowledge, they do. Middle and high school.
Right.
Very good.
I don't think a few of ours don't have.
You need to get you an in-school suspension room, Ms. Jones. Think that'll be a good first move as your principal.
Hey, we're going to get, we're going to get, we're going to get Mr. Gass to hire
Michael said he would be glad to, to staff that for you too.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving down to item number five, approval of the 2021 people, 22 people appraisal plan. Mr. Todd Gass.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, board. I'm back for my yearly visit to update the people progression plan. I do have some help here with me if needed. Mrs. Orton is representing the elementary part of the committee. Mr. Pink was off today. Mr. Aswell is here with the middle school and Mr. Merritt with high school. You have two documents in your folder. One is just a synopsis of the changes, either additions or deletions that were made to the plan. And then you have the full plan itself with those same additions and deletions highlighted throughout the plan so you can kind of see where they fall. This is a lit, let me back up. The state department gave us two options this year, which is a little bit different. They said you could leave the plan alone since we've been going through the pandemic, pandemic issues and just operate off of your previous plan. When I brought that to the committee, the committee felt like there were enough editorial changes and some things that we needed to do because this is a living document, it's constantly changing. Sometimes we miss dates that need to be taken out and I think you can see that through out the document, the editorial strikes that were made from the document. There were a couple of years back, 2015 or stuff that had slipped through and we went in and made changes too. So I'm not going to read obviously the whole document, but you, you can look through starting on page five, some of the additions that were made. Some of these were brought about by virtual instruction and, and things that happen when kids from outside or distance learning or homeschool programs come into the district, how we handle those as far as placement and grades. We've added some language to that, made some deletions through some of the things that have changed since the pandemic requirements have gone down. Just flipping through page eight, you see some changes about requirements for promotion in K through seven. These are, obviously the people progression plan in itself deals with promotion and you can see the highlighted changes in that portion of the document as well. And again, a lot of these are editorial type changes as, as we make our way through the document. Certainly if you have any questions, one of us will be able to address those. We'd like to bring your attention, one of the changes every year is what we look at is, and you'll see on page 29, we've added language and changed language to, to the virtual instruction program. That, that obviously is something evolving from year to year and something we didn't deal with a little over a year ago. We weren't worried about VIP, but that's just something that is upon us now. But flipping back, I think you'll see the, the biggest or some of the changes as it relates is on page 38, and that's instructional minutes during the day. This is varied from school to school as long as schools met the state minimum requirement. Dr. Coker has changed this somewhat. Last year we operated on 400 minute days just so we could catch up with some learning loss that occurred during the closure. But all of our schools this year will move to a 385 minute at least instructional day. And that's reflected here in the plan that we will present, asking for your approval today and that we will present to the state for their approval. So that, that's a quick synopsis of the changes you have on there. If you have any questions, one of us here in the room would be happy to answer those. If not, Mr. Hicks, I would be happy to ask for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the 21, 22 people progressive plan.
I so move that we approve the 2021, 22 people progression plan. It's presented.
Second. Yeah, a motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board?
Todd, we have a committee that kind of guides us on the changes on this from a district standpoint, and we send it to the state for their approval after the board approves, is that kind of the process?
Yes, we're required. Our people progression committee is made up of about 75 members. Every school in the district is represented at every level. COVID has changed a little bit of that, but we do meet, this year we met in, in three smaller groups, the directors or chairmans of those subcommittees came in and we met and, and formulated the changes that we're bringing to you today. Once, if you do approve this today, Mr. Hicks and Dr. Coker will sign this and Cheryl Lamano, and I have to mention her while I'm here, she does a lot of work getting this together every year, will forward this to the state for their, their final approval.
Yeah, and Todd had mentioned, one of the biggest changes was the, the amount of instructional minutes for next year. Because of the pandemic, because we actually started school about a week and a half to 10 days later than normal last year, we came in and we added additional minutes to the school day to hit the minimum number of minutes that, that students had to serve. And so we are planning on staying on schedule. We are starting the 16th of August, full day classes to begin with. And so we were able to back off the 400 minutes because we actually have more school days and the minimum would be 385. If schools elect to go 390, then that's fine. There's no problem with that. With the 385 minimum number, it does build in about four or five weather days that we have throughout the year also that could be used.
Any more discussion?
This takes into account any kid that has like an IDEA or 504.
Is, this would and those, those special education service laws would, would take that into account.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Gass. Moving down to item number six, financial report for May 31st, 21st, Ms. Mekus.
Good afternoon, board. You have before you the financial reports for the period ending May 31st, 2021. This is the 11th month of our fiscal year. So keep in mind in the month of June, it's when we have our accrued summer payrolls and those, and our year end entries that, that will bring us completely up to date for the year. But for the period ending May 31st, 2021, sorry, my contacts moved around. We're ending the, the period in the general fund with a fund balance of $40,166,343. And you'll see that decrease quite a bit in June once we post the accrued salaries for the year. In the district number one, M and O, we're ending the period with $22,333,791. Then we list each of the sales tax funds, the grant funds, debt service and capital projects. They go all the way to the back, to the next, to the end, next to the last page. We have our fiscal year to date revenues and other sources. And this chart gives you kind of a three-year comparison with where we are currently in the fiscal year. To date, our revenues and other sources in the general fund are $135,66,239. We're running very close to, to average on, on that for the year. And our expenditures as well, we're just 1% off for the year from where we typically are this time of year. If you look down at the bottom of the page, our district M and O, and you'll see the same, the three-year average for revenues in our M and O, $6,765,783. And we're less than half a percent off of where we normally are this time of the year over the past three years. And then if you look at the expenditures in M and O, we are down quite a bit in expenditures, $4,990,000. That's down about 34%. And I'll just remind you, I know we've talked about this before, but just remind you, we are being extremely conservative with our tax revenues at this point. With the unknowns in the economy, the increasing cost of building, we're just being very conservative with those funds. And also contributing to that are the ESER funds, which have been available for, for use on some of the day-to-day items that M and O normally takes care of. Does anybody have any questions on the financial statements?
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the financial report for May 31st, 2021?
So move. Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number seven, consider 2021 and 2022 state MFP pay raise implementation plan, Ms. Mekus.
Okay, I'm not going to read this whole sheet to you, but I've just, the 2021, 22 state MFP pay raise implementation, to be consistent with the policies of, of the school board, the following plan is recommended for implementation of the permanent state pay raise, state pay raises authorized by the legislature and Senate concurrent resolution number two of the 2021, 2022 minimum foundation program funding formula. What was approved in the MFP formula based on our staff for the 2020, 2021 year as those numbers are used to project into the 2021, 2022 year is a certificated staff raise of $800 and a support staff raise of $400. If you look on the second page, I copied this directly from the MFP budget report where it gives our allocation to cover the cost of raises along with the benefits portion of those raises being retirement and Medicare primarily. These raises will be, will be done in the same manner as the board has set precedent in 2004, 2018, 2013, 2019. It just gives the state raises over the past 20 years and we're following basically the same guidelines.
With, with the, the state rates, how would it affect?
Uh, hold on, let me get a motion and a second on it. We'll get discussion, okay? We have a motion and a second to approve the 2021, 22 MFP pay raises.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion and, motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board?
Thank you. How does this, will this affect our general fund? If at all?
There should be minimal effect on the general fund. They, the state allocates the amount based on our staffing for the previous year. So they see how many certificated employees we had and how many support personnel we had. They base our allocation on that. So we may differ a little bit. We may be up a little bit depending on staffing, we may be down a little bit, but it should have minimal effect on the general fund because we are only, this only covers what the state has authorized through the MFP.
Any more discussion from the board? Eight hundred, $800 for certified, 400 for support.
Yes, sir.
How would it take effect?
July 1.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number eight, adopt millages for 2021 property taxes, Ms. Mekus.
You have before you the resolution to adopt the millages for the 2021 tax roll on all property subject to taxation in Washita Parish School Board. Millages as listed are constitutional, which is a parish wide tax, 5.18 mills. Maintenance and operations, which is a parish wide tax, 24.15 mills. And the East Washita Parish District for debt service is 30.6 mills. There's no change in any, any of these millages from that of the prior year.
We have a motion and a second to accept the millage for 2021 property taxes.
So move. Second.
A motion and a second. Need a roll call vote, Ms. Mekus.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
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 Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Any discussion from the audience? From the board? Thank you, Ms. Mekus. Moving down to item number nine, construction renovation projects report, Mr. Ken Schlesser.
Mr. Hicks, board members, you should have in front of you just passed out the status report from TBA on Bowley. We had a nine o'clock meeting there this morning. Dr. Coker, Mr. Como and from representing the board. And a project is going real good. They've got the roof on A complete with the upper windows installed. And I think about halfway through on B of getting the roof on. The rains hurt them some, but they're, they're moving right along and doing a real good job. And it looks like the completion date is staying about the middle of December of this year. On Woodlong, we're still behind at Woodlong. Don't know if we'll ever catch up. I was out yesterday and they had about 10 or 12 people working, which was a, a blessing. I didn't, hadn't seen that many people there in a long time. They're doing a good job on inside, on demo and the, the room that's going to be the new, what, whatever they call it, family room or home deck?
Family consumer style.
Whatever they want to call it in there. It should be complete by time school starts. That's all I have, Mr. Hicks, unless y'all have some questions about one of the projects.
The board have any questions for Ken? They have any data on pouring that slab?
When I was there yesterday, he said they was going to pour it Thursday or Friday of this way. That's on the pavilion, the big slab on the pavilion. And they had the purlins, the purlins that was missing was supposed to come in today. And as soon as they get them up, they would start the roof on the canopies.
Any more discussion for Ken? Thank you, Ken. Moving down to evaluation of bids.
I'll take number one and two, Mr. Hicks.
Okay.
Bid number one on the new construction of Sterlington Middle School, I recommend we reject that bid, be an over budget.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to reject this bid?
I move we reject the bid.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
I'd like some discussion on that, Jared.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, Rick.
It's unfortunate we're in this position at Sterlington Middle School based on the cost of the projects that were, were bid. And Dr. Coker has got a prepared message points for the media to share with y'all on this, called this a complicated issue and I want to make sure we get the same message points out there.
because this is a complicated issue and I want to make sure we get the same message points out to everybody at the same time. So he's got some folder that I'm sure he'll release to y'all with the prepared message points. We met with the chamber yesterday and advised them on kind of our plans. And this is what the announcement of the public meeting was all about today. We plan on calling a special election on November the 13th to address the additional funds that will be needed in order for us to complete all the projects on the east side as the voters had voted back in August of 2021. We just feel that it's time, at this point in time, due to the escalated cost of construction and the fact that we cannot complete the projects that we had promised the voters to do per the pamphlet and information we shared last year, that it's time for us to go back to the voters and seek their approval if, if we are to use additional funds to complete the project. So that's kind of where we're adding this whole process. And I, I would encourage the media to try to use the message points that we will hand out to you as you present this to the public. And we'll be trying to sell it to the public between now and election day and let them be aware of all the, the pluses and minuses with this new bond proposal that we'll bring before that. The main thing is, it's a complicated issue. We've been working with our bonding attorney and our financial advisor on this and trying to come up with some options that are available to us due to the unfortunate situation that we're in with the escalated cost of construction due to the pandemic that we're all aware of. And now it's time for us to seek voter input as to what direction they want us to go, so.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
No?
On the roof replacement at West Washita High School, good news. Under budget, about a little over $50,000. I recommend a low bid of southern roofing of $246,000 on that project.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept this roof for $300,000.
I move we accept southern roofing's bid.
I'll second.
I'll move a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
We had some difficulties with the, the bid on riser. And we, so we moved the bid date on it to July the 20th at 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. We'll open bids on riser roof.
Thank you, Ken. Item number three, Mr. Bobby Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. This is the flat panels that the board allowed us to go ahead and approve. And I was bringing this back to the board. The recommendation on this one was to go with AXI. They have the highest point total at 423.5. We're in the process of getting panels replaced at this time, so we're moving forward with that.
Okay. And what was, what was the name of that one?
The vendor was AXI.
AXI, okay.
Flat panels for schools.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept AXI?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
Bobby, our plan is going forward, based on this evaluation of bids, to replace all the panels throughout each classroom in the parish, is that correct?
That is correct for those that have not already had them replaced.
Okay, and the ones that are currently broken and not usable, we're replacing them first?
That is correct.
By the end of this year, we should have all new panels in all the classrooms. That still a goal?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, just for a little bit more clarification on that, Greg. We have, Mr. Miller has addressed the principals Monday in the principals' meeting. And we have had all principals to send in seven rooms where, where, we're starting with the seven at all 37 schools and that are not working. Those are the ones that will be replaced first. And then we will move from there, from, to replace those that, you know, are working that are old.
And that'll be on a school-by-school basis. So they'll, they won't, once they, once we get past the seven, then they're going to go school by school.
With the intent of having everything done by the end of the year?
Yes.
December 15th.
Is there availability on all of these? Is there availability on all these flat panels as far as being available to?
Yes. The vendor basically, both vendors that were in position to be awarded the bid, they both basically bought whatever the bid required because they're, they will use them before the year's out. They both, I mean, nobody was promised anything, but the, both, both vendors that were in the running had already pre-bought all their boards. So there should be no issue for availability.
Bobby, on this bid tab?
Yes.
Several names listed here.
Yes, those were the evaluated.
And they gave a certain number?
Yes, sir. Everybody, everybody did their evaluations independent of each other.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Down to item number four, musical instruments.
Yes, sir, you have, you should have a bid tab in there of the bold items that are on there, 1 through 13. Did not get a responsive bid on item one, so we'll have to figure out what kind of problems they had there. But the rest of them, 2 through 13, the bold type is the low responsive bidder. But, Mr. Hicks, if you want to just take them all at once, we can do that.
Okay, let's go do that. Item four, four, five, six and seven? No, you can take 2 through, 2 through 13, the ones that are bold. Okay.
We can go ahead and just approve those.
Just on the music instruments.
Okay, items 2 through 13. Do we have a motion and a second?
I so move, we approve the band instrument.
Second. Okay, any discussion from the audience? From the board?
Bobby, these band instruments, explain to me, I know each school gets an allotment each year for some band, or us, based on a itinerary that we have for each school where the school board funds some uniforms and band instruments for each school.
Yes, sir.
Explain to me where this comes in at.
Well, either they, either they have accumulated their funds at their school.
So it's the funds at each school that will be utilized to buy these?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Next item is the Chromebook, RFP 40-21.
Yes.
I do want to point out, Mr. Hicks, on this one, that the funding source shows up on the board and I just want to make sure I interject this into the minutes, that we're actually going to use two funding sources on this. One of them is ESARs, both, both are federal. And the other one is ECR, I'm not sure what the acronym is for that, Mr. Miller, but we're going to utilize both of those two federal funds for this purchase.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the Chromebooks.
The recommendation I have on here is for detail. At the time that, that this spreadsheet was put together, Covers 1 actually was a high point total getter, but they, they made a little error in their pricing schedule.
Okay.
Well, I moved to the next one in line, which is Detail.
Motion still stand? No, you, you moving down from, from Chromebooks down to the scoot? I don't know where you at.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm with the Chromebooks.
Yeah.
I just wanted to interject that Detail was going to be awarded the contract.
Okay.
That's still awarded.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hicks.
That's okay.
I did a little lightheaded staying here too long.
You calling for a motion?
Yeah, motion and a second. Okay, I'll move.
I'll second. We need to get you a chair, Bobby. You're passing out up there.
Any discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Next one is for the school buses, Mr. Hicks.
Yeah, okay, moving down to item number six, school buses, M and O, Ms. Jones?
Okay, we had the low responsive bid on bid item one was Scott Truck at $89,775 each. Yes, that sort of put in a little curve there. And then item two was $98,889. But item two was a special needs bus, that's why it's so much higher. That's the way they are. They actually came in less than what we would have if we bought them off state contracts. So we did save some money there.
Okay.
So it was a wise move for the board to go ahead and put those out for bid.
All right, we have a motion and a second from the board?
Move we accept Scott Truck's bid for bid tab four dash 22? I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience?
How many buses are we?
Yeah, how many buses?
I think the item one was eight, wasn't it?
Nine.
Nine, I heard him say. And the other one was two and a half.
Okay. Nine total?
Nine total.
Nine total. And the price did come back cheaper than the state?
That's what I was told. I specifically asked Scott Truck, the representative for them, to make sure that it was below the what the state contract price was. And he said it wasn't much, but every little bit.
And Bobby, this is pretty well rotating through our fleet, right? Getting the older buses offline and bringing on the newer ones, is kind of what we've been doing in the past? Okay.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number seven, copy paper, all funds, Mr. Jones?
Got a bunch of these, Mr. Hicks. Again, I've highlighted our bold type, the responsive low bidder for these items, 1 through 43s.
Okay.
Man, do you want to take those one at a time?
Okay, we go, have a motion for items 1, 2, 43 for the copy paper?
So move.
Second.
Do we get a second?
Right here.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And moving down, permission to bid item number one. And you want to take item one and two?
We do, we do both at the same time. But first one is student Chromebooks that is being bought with ECR funds that Mr. Miller was so graciously awarded. We're going to buy 8,300, is that correct? 8,300 Chromebooks?
Wow.
And then the next item is a controller for the football scoreboard at Western Ohio School, which will be paid for by Western Ohio School.
Right, I understand that.
Those two permissions.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for these items, number one and two.
I move a grant permission to bid these two items.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion from the audience? From the board? The Chromebooks.
8,300 Chromebooks?
8,300.
A replacement.
That would give every student in the parish a Chromebook?
Two of them.
We're already at one to one right now.
But these are extras.
These will be replacements for, for those that are rotating out because the licenses, the,
Won't be renewed.
Google Chrome licenses expire within certain years.
Okay.
Once they expire, the Chromebook basically becomes a brick.
Just like buses rotate off every 20 years, Chrome's rotate off every five years.
I figure they rotate it off.
Well.
What do they do with the old ones, Bobby?
I don't know. I don't even know if we've had any old ones yet.
Grind them up.
I don't know if they went in the auction or what.
They could. Monroe City has a free day every year at the civic center. We can drop them off up there.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Well, board, our next meeting will be August the 10th at 12 o'clock. Dr. Coker?
Just let me give you a, a real quick update on our summer program that we ran through June. It was called SOAR, S-O-A-R, and it was just a time for our students who wanted to come to school at 15 different sites across the district to experience some STEM programs and robotics and art and physical education along with going into some of the guidebooks for this year and for next year and, and math. So we had about 13, a little over 1,300 students to attend the program. And I, I have to say that according to the results that we've gotten back and the comments we've gotten back from parents, from the staff that worked it and from the kids who attended it, it may be one of the best things that we have ever put out there for our kids. And we were able to do this because of the ESAR monies that we have available. We do plan on running this for the next two summers, so 2022 and 2023. We have money budgeted to be able to do this. Hopefully, we'll be able to encourage or to get, you know, more students that's going to be participating. But I, I was able to visit 13 of the 15 sites. And I can tell you, I saw a whole lot of happy folks there during the day. And they were there because they wanted to be there and the kids got a lot out of it. So we certainly appreciate all of those who had a part in this. Mr. Pate and his team, Title II, Title I, Special Ed, all of them kind of collaborated on this and, and they made it a really good experience for our students.
Have a motion to adjourn?